I'd like to call the order, the committee of the whole meeting of Monday, January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Let's begin with roll call.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
And trustee Gafino?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
And trustee Gately?
Here.
No audience comments, no trustee comments to jump into discussion. Item number one, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is an IGA for our geographic information system database that we'd like to partner with the King County GIS department. I'm particularly, we're happy because this, in my opinion, is one of the times where you see municipalities using cooperative services. Instead of going out and buying equipment and hiring staff, we're actually working with another government entity to meet a need. So basically, in front of you tonight, this is several years in the making. GIS has been talked about for probably way longer than I've even been here, which is almost four and a half years. We're behind the times compared to other towns. A lot of them have GIS. And for those who don't really know what GIS is, it's basically, it's a giant database that you can enter any piece of information and data that you can keep historically. So, give an example, every town has a street map. The county gives us data right now that we have from King County that is a street map. So, we can get it, we can click on a parcel, it'll give us any information that the county provides on that parcel, what school district that piece of land is in, what fire district they're in, and we have all that information, maybe even their tax assessment. What we can do, and what other villages do, is create digital databases. And, give you an example, Metronet's in town right now, and they're building basically in every home, they're going everyone's yard and they're putting cable in the ground and they have to do Julie Locates and everything. To do the permitting process for that, John, right now, puts himself in a room by himself, takes out four different color highlighters, takes out paper maps, and spends at sometimes up to eight hours, a full workday, for one permit request, and there's like thirty more coming, where he has to take the entire day and highlight all the utilities on that map so that they have a heads-up of where the utilities are located when they're going out there locating, because our public works department is locating several hundred at a time. With GIS, we would have everything digitized. So, in theory, we would have our water mains, our sewers, storm, sanitary sewer, all of our infrastructure in the ground, plus any data we'd want, in a database that can be mapped at any time. So, to put that in perspective, I get excited, I was a geography major in undergrad. So, what happens is, let's say you want a map of all stop signs. So, we go out there and we collect the data, and we put every stop sign, and it goes into this database. So, at any time, we want to know, hey, we should probably replace some of our stop signs, they might be faded. We pull up that map, we know where every single stop sign is in town, and we can even enter any data we want. So, what year the stop sign was put in. Anytime there's a water main break, we go to the map with the infrastructure for our water main, and we can mark, this segment of water main was replaced in two thousand and seventeen, this segment of water main was put in in nineteen fifty-seven, and that also helps us determine what areas of water main need repair in the future, and which ones we actually are up for replacement because they're just fifty, sixty years old. So, there's any, you can do anything with GIS. So, with that being said, what this is, is we started with a study last year, and it was to see what the most cost-effective way. The price for these have, for this type of system, has dropped dramatically. Ten years ago, you're talking probably maybe half a million to a million dollars minimum to get something started with equipment and everything. Nowadays, a lot of stuff is cloud-based, you can save money by doing things virtually as opposed to having to buy the sixty-five-hundred dollars that cost to have one station set up. Now, you can have virtual stations, and so that reduces costs. So, we looked at full-time employee, we looked at a part-time employee, we looked at consultants, and we looked at using the county, since they have a very renowned GIS department, municipal-wise, and they provide all the King County villages with data already. So, when it all is said and done, the two most cost-effective ways to go was either hiring a part-time village hall staffer to do GIS only, so twenty hours a week or so, or to use the county. If you look at the chart on the page in front of you, the dollar amounts are similar, but what you don't see is every five, six years, the village would have to buy updated equipment. Those are costs that are absorbed, in this case, by the county. So, what we get out of this is a, the most cost-effective deal, price-wise, the ability to utilize, they have them store our data for us, and the ability to use all of their, and they have a full-time staff of several people there, to utilize their services as opposed to one person who we'd have to find that's willing to work part-time, that may, maybe doesn't have a ton of experience, and they're just looking for a job out of college or so on. Now, you have a whole department that's really good at what they do, and we can utilize them about twenty hours a week, and we can get the job done a lot faster, at a cheaper cost, and not have the long-term equipment, basically the purchases in the future. With that being said, attached is an IGA, so an intergovernmental agreement to utilize King County, and we would be the first town to do this, to partner with the county on GIS. So, we're excited about it, and I wanted to bring it to the committee of the whole for discussion before I bring it to the board for final approval at the next meeting. That's the plan right now. So, if there's any questions, I would be more than happy to answer what I can.
Is there an advantage to, despite the extra cost, is there an advantage to, I mean, ruling that out? Is there any other advantage to us doing it on our own?
Yes, there is an advantage to that, and that's why this is a, this is a year-to-year agreement, and we can get out of it with its sixty days' notice, so it doesn't lock us into the long term. The advantage of having a full-time staff, and what you find is, and I'm not advocating this, some towns that allow one GIS person will end up adding another GIS person, because with GIS, the amount of efficiencies you gain by tracking everything digitally, not even the staff time, but just the ability, like we did earlier tonight at the Services Committee, we talked about using updated technology on how to reinvent which roads we should be doing first to save money. It's the same thing, if you have all this information, there's always information you can add into the system that's going to benefit you down the road. For instance, one of the things that we would like to do is maybe hire a part-time intern at some point in the future to just send out in the summertime to literally go street by street and collect several pieces of data. So, where is every valve to every home for their water services? So that if it's snow on the ground and we get a water main break and someone has to go shut somebody's water off, they're not digging in the snow to find it, they know exactly on a map of that parcel where the valve is, and they can go right to the valve and turn it off. So, you gain efficiencies that way. By having a full-time staffer, what you'd be able to do is create what they call layers, and those are those, those types of information. So, the county gives us a map, and any piece of data you want, it's called a layer, and that layer just goes right on top of the map. So, if you say, I want to know every school in North Aurora, you hit a button, you have all the data there, and all of a sudden, on your screen, every, there's a dot for every school in North Aurora, every bike path, whatever you want, you can put into the system. So, yes, eventually, it would save money, but at first, we want to build the basics, and we know the county is not only the experts at this, but they also have the staff and the time to do this, cost-effectively but quickly.
So, I see. So, we can get out of it each year if we want, if we need to, or if we wanted to?
Yes.
Steve, on that note, if we do pull out of the IGA, do we get to retain the information that they've mined?
Correct.
It'll be turned over?
Yeah, it's our data, so we pay for the data, we get the data.
Sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, as long as we can go to the same software and everything else, so that's the most important thing.
There's really, the thing about the software, there's really only one company that all municipalities use for GIS, it's ESRI. We actually bought, so we did, so it's like sixty-five-hundred dollars for a, for a station, if you will. So, you buy a turnkey computer, and then the software itself, I think it's about five-thousand dollars apiece. Through this IGA, we'll have access, and I was talking to Dave Arnn before the meeting, so I want to make sure I have this right, we'll have access to five actual, at one time, five employees can get in at the minimum, and we'll be able actually to manipulate data, create maps on our own with the data that they've provided. But we'll have an unlimited amount of people that can log in from their computers in village hall at any time to just look at things that have already been created. So, basically, you can look at maps that are already done, and five people at a time can go in and actually create maps and stuff and work on the GIS through their virtual interface.
So, how do we store our data now?
So, a lot of our data, John, it's kind of coincidental that tonight's village board agenda had eleven thousand dollars roughly for a Rempey Sharp. They, our in-house engineers for years had built everything on a computer-aided design program. That program is basically what creates the maps that we utilize now. And this is not, this is not a Rempey Sharp issue, because some of these maps were created before Rempey Sharp was around. But some of the maps are wrong. I mean, like, we've gone out, there was at least one map that John showed me the other day, about a week ago, and it was a sanitary sewer, and on the paper map, it showed the service doing a loop. Sanitary services wouldn't do that because it would all end up in the same place, it wouldn't be heading to a main, it would all just end up in the same pipe. So, when you see stuff like that, that means we have to have someone to go out there and actually field test that area, visualize it, and then go back to Rempey Sharp and say, can you update your maps? In this case, what we'd be doing is, in the future, we would be providing the data directly to the county, we wouldn't have to pay the engineering firms to do those things, we would provide them the field data, they would put it in the maps for us. And they can take Rempey's existing CAD files and convert them.
You know, this is the, not as designed, but as built, there is a difference when it, when they put in the ground. You know, it's interesting that fifty years ago, when I was with IBM, I was selling this concept, there wasn't any software available then, but the concept was there, and so here we are, fifty years later, we're finally getting into it, so.
Yeah.
That's progress.
Yep. Well, put it this way, when I was in college, twenty years ago, this was a class that was mandatory for geography majors. By the time I was out of college, it was a major in a lot of universities, and our intern, who also has a geography degree, was telling me that basically, you could take a whole, like I said, a major of justice, and I asked him, cartography was still, hand-drawn maps were just being phased out when I was in college, he didn't know what cartography was. So, GIS is the future, and that's where we're going.
Well, my only concern is, with John, you have a reliable person at all times, close to you. When you hire a third-party service, as long as you don't have one of those customer lines that it takes two days to get a hold of, you know, so I...
Well, it's King County, we live in King County.
Yeah.
And that's, and we have the same concern. The consultant was much more expensive to hire someone and have them, and then you worry about the service agreement. What's nice about the county is they provide us a lot of the data now, we just don't have the ability to utilize it because we don't have a system. But, once again, if it doesn't work out well, let's say the service isn't good, but they have said that they will dedicate time to us. If it doesn't work out, the nice thing is, it's not like we're locked in, and we kind of pay-as-you-go, so to speak, so you're not really putting a lot of upfront cost into it.
And we save about ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's before, what doesn't show on this chart is that after year six, you're probably buying more equipment again, that's why we did a six-year show. So, every sixth, seventh year, you're buying more equipment, new servers and whatnot to store the data.
I like the idea, Sharon, so I think it's good.
Oh, I think that's a super idea, and I think at some point in time, certainly in the future, we may want our own, but there's a lot of data out there to capture between now and then that we can take, you know, that we need to get to take advantage of. You know, there's just, there's all kinds of data out there that we need to, we need to capture, so it's not all sitting there waiting to be used, a lot of it has to be entered, created. Any other discussion on GIS? So, you got your ideas there? Item number two, then, Bill?
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have just a brief mid-year financial update for the village board, like we do every year in January. PowerPoint presentation should be on your screen, so if you have any questions along the way, just feel free to ask. So, this is our sort of mid-year overview. We began our budget process officially last month. At this point in time, we anticipate giving the Government Operations Committee an update on the status of budget development closer to March fifth, with committee of the whole discussion closer to April second for the official draft budget. So, just wanted to give the village board an update on what those timelines and dates look like. So, as the boards are aware, we passed a balanced budget last year for our general fund, which is our main operating fund. Over the last four years, as you can see in the chart, we've had positive general fund operations over the last four years, usually between two-hundred and three-hundred, just over three-hundred thousand dollars. So, this was also after a lot of one-time funds were allocated by the village board for pension contributions and capital projects. So, the board did a good job allocating those one-time revenues per our financial policies. We currently have a sixty-eight percent financial reserve for the general fund, which, again, is very strong. We'll talk a little bit later, that number might be a tad lower by the end of the current fiscal year, but that's something that we'll evaluate as we move through the budget process. And as the board is aware, we are still maintaining our double-A-plus bond rating based on the high liquidity and financial ratios that we've talked about. So, as the board is aware, our general fund is about ten-point-seven million in revenues, ten-point-seven million in expenditures. On the revenue side, really, three major revenue sources for the general fund, sales tax, income tax, and property tax make up the bulk of our revenues coming in to fund our basic services, which obviously include police, public works, and various village hall services. Touch on our sales tax revenue a little bit. So far, for the fiscal year, it's about two-point-eight percent higher for the first five months. This is continuing a trend that we've seen over the last seven consecutive years with positive increases in sales tax revenue. It wasn't so long ago, for a point of reference, that our sales tax revenue was just under three-point-two million back in fiscal year oh-nine-ten, and now we're back up to about four-point-five million, so we've come a long way over the last seven years. We have had some indicators of auto sales in the village, sort of peeking out a little bit, and that's been something that's been discussed industry-wide, so that's something we've been monitoring, you know, with our sales tax revenue. We've had a mix of new businesses, plus some retail closings over the, over the year. Gas prices are also increasing, which isn't a great thing for the average person, but that does affect sales tax revenues since fuel purchases are applicable to that. So, those things are kind of contributing to the performance of the first five months of the year. So, right now, we're projecting about two-point-three percent more than last year, about four-point-six-eight-six million versus our budget of four-point-seven. Going forward, we're going to monitor closely, obviously, there's a lot of discussion about traditional retail tax, sales tax basis, switch to online retailing, so we know that's affecting a lot of things nationally and statewide. So, we kind of have a cautious outlook going forward as we move through our budget process. And we can email these slides out later, but this just shows our year-over-year sales tax revenue through the first five months of the year, and really, it does vary a lot on a monthly basis sometimes. Some months were down and some months were up compared to the same month last year, but if we're looking at approximately two percent for the rest of the year, we'd end up about four-point-six-eight-six million for the year. So, another major revenue in the general fund is our shared, state-shared income tax revenue. That's actually down one-point-three percent for the first seven months of the year, and that's a little, actually more positive than we expected, because the state did decrease that revenue sharing amount by about ten percent, effective with their state budget beginning in July. So, this had a, kind of follows a significant decrease we had in the prior year for various reasons. There were some new software changes at the owner department of revenue that changed how they allocate all the different income taxes. So, some of the decline that we've seen has been offset by the full-year implementation of our special census. As you recall, we had a census increase of about four percent, so that impacted positively our state shared revenues beginning in January of two thousand and seven. So, we're still seeing the effects of that, that move. So, right now, we're projecting about, decrease of about four-point-seven percent for income tax revenue for next fiscal year. You can kind of see some of the major, you know, declines that every community experienced in the prior year. And then, beginning in July, we saw the, when the state began their decrease of ten percent. So, we anticipate probably more closer to eight percent for the remainder of the year, but again, it's really hard to project and predict what this revenue source is going to do on a monthly basis, because there are significant fluctuations and variations with corporate and individual income taxes. I know we recently spent a lot of time talking about our tax levies, sometimes we spend too much time on property tax revenue, other than to just sort of illustrate this chart, which kind of shows where the property tax extensions are allocated over the last five years. And as we've talked about, we've seen an increasing share for our police pension, to fund our police pension liabilities and what that required contributions. So, that's what that blue line means right there. This line down here is our liability insurance fund, and essentially, what that means with the sort of minimal CPI increases over the last several years, property tax revenue actually remaining in the general fund to fund other village services is actually going down. So, I know we've talked about this a lot, but I just wanted to illustrate the chart here to reflect that. Really quickly, we want to touch on building permit revenue. Our budget, which is sort of a base budget, assuming not a lot of certificate projects, is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Year-to-date, we've got about, about a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars so far. As you can see with the chart, we have a lot of one-time projects over the last several years that we allocated those revenues for other purposes. So, this year, we're not anticipating any big projects for the remainder of this fiscal year, but we do know that there's some other large projects on the horizon, residential, commercial, that we could see a large influx of building permits in, in the next couple This just shows a few other revenue sources in the general fund. Our use tax revenue continues to go up, and that's due to collection of that tax via online retailers and remittance of that tax to the state. The video gaming tax, we still see, continue to see increases in that as the number of businesses implementing video gaming continues to increase, looking at about eighty-seven thousand dollars for this year. As we've talked about before, our telecommunications tax continues to climb, and that's true for all municipalities, just with the change in number of people wanting various services such as landlines or consolidating services, digital media, we're seeing that revenue source continue to tick down a little bit. On cable franchise fees, we anticipate that to continue to increase over the next couple of years and this current year. And interest rates are finally starting to rise a little bit, so we're seeing an increase of investment income with our portfolios. So, just kind of some of the, some of the positive things offsetting some of the more negative things on the revenue side for the general fund that we're seeing this year. So, for most part, most other revenues are up or slightly down. We're estimating about ten-point-seven million is, was our budget for this year, and we're estimating revenues to be, right now, be around ten-point-five million. That number's going to change, obviously, as we work through the process, but going forward, we have sort of a cautious outlook for our sales tax revenue. We've got some uncertainty, obviously, on the legislative side with income tax revenue, but there is still underlying strong growth on the economic side of it. We do have the potential for significant development over the next couple of years, which will impact various development fees. We did implement the DUI tow fees last year, so we're really starting to see that revenue source that was implemented by police increase. And as mentioned before, the investment income side, we anticipate that continuing to increase significantly over the next couple of years. On the expense side, we're going to start to monitor what our variances are going to be. It's really hard at this point in the year to start doing projections based on repair costs, consulting costs, but typically, expenditures are about two to three percent under budget, so we anticipate that holding true. With some of the one-time costs that we have anticipating this year, and the state's reduction in LGDF, we are anticipating possibly expenditures being slightly higher, closer or close to revenues at this point for the general fund. So, we do anticipating possibly using a small amount of reserve out of the general fund this year, sixty-eight percent, maybe around sixty-three percent. Again, that's very tentative, and that could swing the other way, more positive as we kind of move through the year, but that's what we're anticipating at this point. Still, that number's obviously very strong and very appropriate use of reserve if we do need to this year. Highlighting on a few other funds really quickly, on our MFT fund, we're seeing revenues about seven percent higher through the first five months of the year, estimating to be about four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. And as the board knows, this is where we fund purchases of our road salt, our crack filling programs, and any street lighting, electricity repair needs that we need. That sort of speaks for that four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We allocated some of our MFT reserves this year for implementing LED and street lighting pole upgrades, and this is sort of the first year of a multi-year program for that. So, we do have a good, we still have a good reserve in the MFT fund, projected to be about nine-hundred thousand for this current fiscal year. So, we'll be able to use some of that reserve to fund the LED program and any other, in the future, street maintenance or street reconstruction programs where it might be advantageous to use MFT funds for that. Route thirty-one TIF fund, our TIF increment this year was three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. You can kind of see the chart there to the side about strictly for the route, the TIF increment revenues. We completed our Smoke Tree project in the prior year, so that was our major capital project. This year, there's engineering for the silo reuse currently underway. Our reserve at the beginning of the year was one-point-one million, so we anticipate that increasing this fiscal year a little bit, as we don't have any major infrastructure projects, but we do have some planned for two thousand and eighteen. So, we do anticipating using future TIF increment as well as a portion of our reserve to fund those projects. On our capital projects fund, as the board is aware, we have a few dedicated revenue sources for our capital projects fund. One is our non-home real sales tax, which is a half percent. We are seeing some increases in that revenue source this year to about one-million-thirty-five thousand dollars is our projection at this point. Our utility and telecommunications tax revenue is the other dedicated revenue source. The red line is our electricity utility tax, which is pretty stable. The green line is the telecommunications tax of three, three percent that's allocated to the capital projects fund. And again, like the general fund, we've seen declines in that revenue source over the last several years. And the blue line would be the utility tax on natural gas. So, all these revenue funds, all these revenue sources by board action are restricted and dedicated for capital projects. In total, those revenue sources equal about one-point-seven million dollars. John just kind of gave the Services Committee an update on what was the paving condition index study, which is analyzing the condition of the village's roads. Last year, we kind of estimated that we would need to spend a certain amount of money to maintain the street system, and that over a five-year period, we may or may not be one-and-a-half to two million dollars short of funding that. With the PCI study, that's going to take a closer look at some of those numbers and reevaluate what the five-year and ten-year outlook is going to be for road resurfacing, mill and overlay, base repair, and reconstruction. So, based on timing of our road program, we are anticipated, we began the year with two-point-one million, and we're probably going to end around two-point-seven million, and that's more of a function of, we don't anticipate our two thousand and eighteen street program to begin until after June first. So, our policy requires us to make sure we have enough for cash flow purposes, so at a bare minimum, that would mean keeping about a one-point-two million reserve on a fiscal year basis. This is just an outline of the PCI study I mentioned. This just kind of lists the different categories that streets, this PCI study rates streets at. So, we have the good, satisfactory, fair, poor. Obviously, as the colors change, and red, the more significant, you know, reconstruction or resurfacing that needs to be done to that street. And this just allocates or sort of shows on a percentage basis, you know, the, what the condition is of the sixty-nine miles of village street that we're taking part as part of that study. So, this is all laid out in a map, every street has, every street segment has a color. And so, the, you know, annual road program is going to be taken a look at on a long-term basis, based on this study, and determine what road segments should be done on an annual Two more quick notes on the water fund. Our water charges are about one-and-a-half percent more at this point than they were last year. We're still seeing a trend towards people using more efficient fixtures and conservation. This has kind of contributed to somewhat flat revenues over the last several years despite having increases in, new customers and residents. Our connection fees to date are ninety-two thousand dollars, which is more than all we received in last year of about thirty-five thousand dollars. Those connection fees help offset the cost of future capital improvements to the water system, be it for capacity or repairs to treatment facilities, and helps alleviate any needed rate increases on current customers. So, we are planning to continue to spend down the five-point-eight million. So we are planning to continue to spend down the five-point-eight million that we borrowed in bonds for the two new deep wells and water tower. Those projects are, have been bidded or out to bid shortly for the two wells. We have seen some increases in operating costs, replacement of equipment with the two treatment plants and that's something we'll take into consideration, you know, going forward, more than likely, once we complete these capital projects that the village borrowed five-point-eight million dollars for. And finally, we just have our vehicle and equipment fund, which has been good to set aside money when we need to replace vehicles. It's been especially helpful setting aside money there. We have major IT or other information technology projects, software that we've need to purchase and implement throughout the village, so that's been a, been a good success. We are looking at an increase in our police pension contributions last year, primarily due to some assumption changes that we had. And we know we covered this during our tax levy discussions, but overall, we're seeing good investment and portfolio returns over the last twelve months and we anticipate that continuing into the, into the near future. We will evaluate if we can feel like it's a good time to make an additional police pension contribution this fiscal year. Like I said before, we're looking at a pretty tight revenues and expenditures projected at this point. It's not sure we'll be able to do that, but it is something we'll at least evaluate during the budget process. So that's my ten-minute presentation. If any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, it's a nice report.
Yep.
Can you email the slides out?
Yep, I'll email the slides out.
Very positive, very positive. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
To talk about sale of village property.
Second.
All those in favor say?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We're in an executive session and we won't be coming back. We won't be coming back.
Eighteen, I was planning on fifteen, so I thought it was ten.
It was fine. Talking about the street.
Oh, he's dancing.
Bo, boogie.
Um, where I was...
Why, why, for example, vehicle that is...
Right downtown is moving out to...
Well, I think, I think, I think that's what this one is, this is, this is an extra vehicle.
Well, he can probably make a nine-eight spot.
It would be the extra, the extra.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He can make it.